Welcome to the September 2nd City Council Meeting, also known as Counselor Nash's Birthday Meeting and a happy belated birthday to Counselor Thorpe. I'm Jean-Louise Shara, I'm the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We'll begin with public comment, then after public comment, we'll convene the meeting. If you wish to make public comment, please use the raised hand feature. It's either at the bottom menubar under reactions or it's in the bottom of the participants panel, which you get to by clicking on participants on the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me to ensure equal access and because of open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing the chat function is used for and it'll only be used during public comment. We cannot accept comment or commentary over chat. Private chat or chat only visible on Zoom during a public meeting is antithetical to an open public process in violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirit and potentially the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to citycouncil@northamptonma.gov and it'll be sent to all counselors and will be part of the public record. I'll unmute each raised hand in the order in which it's been raised. Please state your name and city or town for the record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to three minutes. You're in no way obligated to use the full three minutes, but if you do, after three minutes, I'll ask you to please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as is your time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. Our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and with respect for all and with recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also for an open meeting law, if someone's disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I'll ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor and all comments are to be directed at the council. This meeting can be watched on channel 15 or by streaming North Hampton Open Media's YouTube channel or on their other platforms. And the recording of this meeting will be available at North Hampton Open Media's government video archive channel on YouTube. I thank them as always for that public service. So we will now open up to public comment. Let me just check the chat. All right, seeing no hands, I will ask Laura to please take the role.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Yeah.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge. Counselor LaBarge? I think you're muted.
Oh, you're muted.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm just pulling up my agenda. And the first item that we have is a public hearing. So this is a public hearing on the administrative order. North Hampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 2nd, 2021, at 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's actually accurate for once. City Council will consider proposed amendments to the City in North Hampton Administrative Code, Part 1, Administrative Organization, Section 2.04, Office of the City Clerk. I will, would you, during, and then I will read the administrative order.
Move to open the public hearing, please.
Second that. This has been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion on opening the hearing? See none. Please, on opening.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is open. I'm just gonna read, I'll read the letter from the mayor and the order, which is incredibly brief. And then we will proceed. So this was dated August 17, 2021. This is to the honorable members of the City Council. Pursuant to my authority under Article 6, Section 6-1 of the City Charter, I'm respectfully submitting the attached administrative order removing the reference to the city clerk as an elected official in Section 2.04 of the Administrative Code in order to align it with the recently enacted changes to the City Charter. As you know, change from elected to an appointed city clerk was among the many recommendations put forward to the City Council and mayor in 2019 by the Charter Review Committee and ultimately sent to the state legislature as special act amendments to our city charter. On Friday, August 13, 2021, Governor Baker signed into law Chapter 40 of the Special Acts of 2021, an act amending the Charter of the City of North Hampton. With our charter amendments now complete, this proposed administrative order will bring the Administrative Code into conformity with the City Charter. Thank you in advance for your review of these proposed changes to the Administrative Code. I stand ready to answer any questions, provide additional information, and respectfully request the City Council's approval of the attached order sincerely, David J. Narckwitz, Mayor. And the order is, Laura, I don't know if you want to, if you'd be able to put it up really quickly, it's amend City and North Hampton Administrative Code, Part 1, Administrative Organization, Section 2.04 as follows. 2.04, Office of the City Clerk established. There shall be an office of the city clerk under the supervision of a city clerk, and we are striking elected by the voters of North Hampton. That is the order, administrative order. Okay. And Mayor Narckwitz, you're here to talk about your order.
I think the, I think the letter is fairly self-explanatory. Obviously, this was not only a recommendation of this most recent Charter Review Committee. It was actually, some similar recommendation was made back in 2011, 2012, although that didn't end up making it into the charter change in 2012. But this was a unanimous recommendation of the Charter Review Commission. It was adopted unanimously by the City Council. It took the legislature a little while to actually get the bill adopted and, and the governor signed it into law. So now this is part of our charter. And so this is really just cleaning up the administrative code to make it reflect what, what the charter reflects. And then if, if and when this gets adopted, then the next piece of, of work would be, I will submit a formal appointment to you of, of a city clerk appointee for you to confirm.
Thank you. So this is a hearing. Are there any other proponents or people who'd like to speak in favor of this change to the code? Feel free to raise your hand. So it's same process for raising your hand as with public comment. So look under reactions or under the participant panel if anyone would like to raise their hand and speak to this. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this as an opponent to this change? Counselors, do you have questions or comments? Want to weigh in? Counselor Dwight?
I see that Sam Moulton is here. Stan was the chair of the Charter Review Committee. And with Vice Chair, Stan Hopper. The, and is Pam here? I can tell Pam Powers is here, but.
I do not see Pam.
But the mayor is right about this historical arc of this. In fact, it's, it's been a recommendation for a while. It is, we're one of the outliers in the state of Massachusetts as far as having a professional city clerk's office as opposed to an elected city clerk's office. That's not to say that the people who all served as city clerks for the city of North Hampton were not professional, but they were elected. And there is an intrinsic problem in so far as, one, job security is not great, right? Every other year, just as counselors, you would have to set yourself to trying to get reelected. The fact is that that impedes or affects the ability to plan out long-term. It also doesn't, it means that you don't necessarily have to be qualified to become a city clerk. And there have been candidates that I think I can candidly say who are immensely not qualified. And this position is way too important to give over to a popularity contest. And more, you know, elections are critical and the, the people's voice is an essential part of this, the way we govern ourselves. It is the nature of democracy. But the other irony here is this professional office presides over those elections. They, it puts a city clerk in an awful position in presiding over their own election, which is an embedded conflict that the state really is never satisfied and never figured out what's the best way to deal with. Pam did not advocate one way or the other during the course of this, but the fact is she provided some very useful information and in, was a great service to us on this. And I, I look forward to actually seeing her name pop up again personally in, in, when the mayor comes before us again asking to appoint under the authority granted to him in this administrative order. So anyway, that's, that's essentially the story. That's the pushback. There, when it was originally suggested, it was deemed politically expedient not to include it in the, the vote for charter because that was the most divisive issue. And it would, the concern was it may, it might have jeopardized the, the vote for the support of the charter. And rather than lose the very important changes that were made, the recommenders had decided that maybe this is an issue to be addressed at a later date. And here we are at that later date.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, thank you. If I can recall when George Zimmerman was a treasurer elected. And then I remember when our mayor at that time, Mary Claire Higgins, went to him and had talked with him about going from elected to non-elected. And he was very willing to do that because it made sense to do it. Because that way they had the treasurer's office, George Zimmerman, and we had our financial director, and it was all combined together. So that did happen. So just recently, with the Charter Commission, I went to speak and so did Wendy Mazna about my concern was what the qualifications were, which I did speak at that Charter Commission, was to be 18 years old, a resident of North Hampton, and a high school diploma. That is it. That was it. And that's important here because just anybody like Counselor Dwight was just saying could just go ahead and put in for, and it could be somebody who is very liked in the city and could get that job and not have any type of experience at all. So I, I, I think this is the right way to go and I agreed with that. And I'm happy to see this happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster?
Just very briefly, I wanted to echo the gratitude Counselor Dwight expressed. I saw Stan here and wanted to express my own gratitude for the hard work of the Charter Review Commission. When I first, I mentioned this at council a long, long time ago, maybe a year and a half ago, when we were discussing this as a council for the first time after the commission's recommendations. And I was initially uneasy with the recommendation to sort of remove some public input in any process. But the Charter Review Commission made a very strong case. And, and, you know, I certainly understand the benefits of the city clerk position being an appointed one rather than an elected one. I won't reiterate all of the points. But I'm grateful for the hard work of the volunteers and our council representative who, who took that process on. And so I look forward to supporting this change tonight.
Thank you for sharing that. Counselor Quinlan?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the mayor, outside of the great points that Counselor Dwight just made for us that came out of all the research, I wonder if there's anything else that you see in terms of chain of command? And I realize that, that you're, you're less than four months here, but what you see as chain of command and what you else you see as other points that are really positives about this, just in terms of the operation of City Hall?
Um, I mean, I, I mean, I think Counselor Dwight hit on, hit on a lot of the points that we've talked about. Um, you know, I think at last count of the almost 50 cities in Massachusetts, now with North Hampton switching to appointed, I think there's now only Now with Northampton switching to appointed, I think there's now only four cities left that have an elected city clerk. So, uh, we were clearly in the minority. And really, I think, um, in terms of chain of command, I, I don't think there'll be much of a change. I mean, I, I've always worked well with. I tried to work well with the city clerks and, you know, they, I mean, they're, they have a department, they have staff who of course aren't elected, um, and they're just like all of our other staff and. You know, we have regular department meetings and budget meetings and, um, and talk about capital requests. And so. For all intents and purposes, they've functioned like a department head, um, but I do think that, um. You know, I think the particularly the points about just the professionalism of the office and, um. You know, what we did when we originally did the charter change back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, I think one of the more compelling. Uh, pieces of information, and I think this applied to the treasurer position and it applied to other, you know, positions like assessor and others that. Have been elected over time is that there is a distinction between. A policymaker, someone who makes policy, um, like the council, like the school committee, um, and somebody who's really. Carrying out the law, you know, enforcing laws and, and, you know, carrying out election laws, you know, carrying out, um, the storage of vital records, carrying out the public. Records and open meeting laws, um, and so, um, and, and even carrying out elections. I mean, that's, that's all prescribed by either state law or by the charter. And so. For so many reasons, I think this is the, this is really the way, um, to go. And, and also. Actually, uh, another, another piece of this I would, I would point out is that. Because the city clerk functions like a department head, but because they're elected, they get a fixed salary that's set by ordinance. So they don't get, um, they don't get regular cost of living adjustments like their peers who work in all the other offices in City Hall. They don't accrue vacation time. They don't accrue sick time. They don't accrue, um, any of those things, um. Uh, the mayor doesn't either, but obviously I'm in a slightly different position, um, but, uh, but that is also one of the disadvantages for someone who. You know, for all intents and purposes, functions like a department head, um, and supervises, um, appointed, you know, um. Staff, um, who are union members and, um, and but doesn't get all the same, um. Treatments within the paying class study, uh, paying classification system as the other department heads. So I think that will also be important as well. Um, and in the future to try to attract, um, if, if there's a, you know, um, if there needs to be a replacement in the future. Um, again, the other thing that came up, actually, I think it, it was one of the interesting things that. I think may have even swayed the former city clerk a little bit about this, um, because when we, um, when the former city clerk, um, stepped away. And retired, um, it became clear that in order to be the city clerk, you had to be a resident of North Hampton. And, um, and our assistant at the time was not a resident of North Hampton, so they were disqualified. So also just seeking. Candidates for the position, um, I think it gives you more options in terms of, you know, being able to draw from a slightly larger regional. Pool, um, of qualified candidates. And, you know, we know that, um, as fun as municipal government is, uh, it's, uh, been challenging. You know, as people, um, have aged out of, of municipal government, that there's not as many folks coming up behind them in a lot of these. Uh, fields, um, particularly in finance and some of the other fields. So I just, I also think from a future recruitment standpoint. It has this advantage of not having it tied to, uh, the elected must be a resident role. So you, you know, you may have someone who's imminently qualified. You know, who's an assistant clerk, um, in East Hampton or Hadley, um, and is ready to move up and could be hired and move into that role. So that's another example, I think.
Great, thank you. Uh, speaking of candidates, I'll be waiting on pins and needles to see who you, uh, who you proffer, but. Uh, isn't it a lovely position to be in to have someone that the people of Northampton have already chosen?
Exactly. And I, I, I intend to carry out the same precedent that we did with the treasurer position, uh, that, you know, Mayor, Mayor Higgins, um. You know, the vote, uh, the, the charter was changed and the position was, was changed from elect, elected to appointed and, and the incumbent was appointed. So I, I. Fully intend to, uh, to continue that tradition.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Dwight and Counselor Garrett, actually Counselor Garrett first and Counselor Dwight.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, when will this take effect? I mean, does, does clerk powers? Have to fulfill her term as elected by the voters and it takes effect in January first, or? Is it just when the, um, when we, whenever we confirm the appointment?
Uh, the, the, the special act that was adopted by the legislature, um, took place immediately upon enactment. So, um. So it is effective now. Um, it did not take effect at the end of the term or if, you know, it, it was effective immediately. So, um. So she's in a little bit of a limbo right now. Um, she obviously was elected, um, uh, and, um, but, but that's why we're making this change. So yeah, it, it, it goes into effect, um, immediately. I mean. Back in November of twenty twelve, when the last charter, um, was adopted, uh, you know, the. Last meeting in October of the city council, I chaired the city council meeting. I was the, um, I was the mayor. And the mayor used to chair the city council meeting and come November, I did not, I was no longer the chair, right? Immediately after the election, we separated. Um, and immediately effectuated the change. So yeah, she will, um, become an appointed clerk as soon as, um. The appointment comes forward and goes through your process and, and the appointment happens, um. And again, she's, uh, she did put her name forth on the ballot just to be safe in case there were some kind of a snafu at the state level and this didn't get passed in time. But, um, but, but she will, um, she will be able to, um. And, and as Counselor Dwight said, there is a, there is a challenge, particularly with city clerks, there isn't an exemption for, um. Under ethics laws around, uh, running elections on which you're in the ballot. So it would, it will also clear that up for this election as well. Not that there was anyone running against her. She was running unopposed, um, but, but anyway, so yeah, it will go into effect. As soon as the appointment is confirmed by the city council.
Thank you.
Counselor Dwight?
Just some expansion on the salary issue is, is the, the city clerk is, uh, past city clerks have discovered. Are reliant on us to forward the, uh, the pay raise. We have to approve it. And that's a political hot potato. If you, uh, I don't know if any of you remember when we were discussing actually council. Uh, compensation or the, uh, in, in folded and that was conversation also about the salary for. Um, all elected officials, including the clerk. So. It became a political issue without a lot of political coverage behind it. So you can be stuck in a, without, as the mayor pointed out. Without any calls, cost of living increases, without any other flexibility. You're literally subject to the whim of the body that approves your, uh. Increase, and they are political animals foremost. I mean, they, you know, people will be concerned that that would be, uh. An inappropriate, uh, expenditure. This way. The clerk is enfolded into the HR, um, protocols and requirements under state law and under, under municipal guidance. And it is far more just and, and, and also. Provides a little more comfort in, 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 uh. You know, whoever fills the position in their, in their prospects for the future.
Thank you.
My question.
Sure. Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you, Counselor Shara. Um, just a question to the mayor. It's September second. We're doing one reading on this. And will it be coming back again? For city council on the twenty second of September? And are we going to be referring this to city service?
So I will be submitting the, um, I'll, I'll be submitting the nomination, the appointment at your September twenty second meeting. Because by your rules, um, administrative orders only require one reading, so tonight would be the one reading. And, um, so I, my, I would submit it and then you would have to refer it to city services or, you know, by charter, it has to be referred to a committee. So. You would have to do that. So, um, whether you would want to, you know, hold a meeting, a special meeting or do it at the October meeting, you know, embedded in the city council, I'm not sure. That would be up to you, but, um. So yeah, it would have to follow the normal appointment process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I, I will echo what Counselor Dwight said that I'm very. Glad that this conversation is, is a very sort of different conversation than been in the past, and this was, has not been a divisive. Issue, um, and also as everyone has said, uh, that we are relieving the clerk of that inherent conflict. Of interest of, um, the person being in charge of elections also being on the ballot. So, um, this is. I'm very glad that this change is happening. Um, so I'm going to remind people, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public wants to. Way in or ask a question, um. Or just share anything you are very welcome to, um. But seeing, oh, Ezekiel Baskin. Oh, hold on. There you go.
I have one question just out of curiosity, which is, so the, the same points about sort of qualification for the clerk's position. I guess I'm curious how those are different for the mayor's position, which also could be. Like someone wholly unqualified could be elected mayor. I, I'm just curious about that. Not, that's a whole other kettle of fish, but I guess it just, I'm, I'm interested. What, what differentiates?
I, I guess I would point to the differentiation I made before between a policymaker versus, um, someone who is, um. You know, carrying out administrative, strictly carrying out administrative duties. Um, so I, I, and. You know, in our elected system, both at the state and federal and here at the local level, um. The pri, the qualifications are that typically that you're, you know, of a certain age and that you're, um, you know, a registered voter in whatever. Uh, locality or district you're running in, um, and those tend to be the only, um, the only qualifications, um, and then really because it's a political office. Then really it's up to the voters to decide. So, um, I think that would be the difference, and it's the same for city council and school committee and. You know, if you read the constitution, the qualifications for president or senator or house, I mean, we can debate whether. There maybe should be some more qualifications, but, um, but that's, that, I think that is therein lies the distinction between, um. A professional non-policy making, um, role versus a, you know, a, a governmental, uh, policymaking, um. Uh, official. That's my best answer.
Um. Counselor Dwight, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, I, I was just going to respond briefly, what, what the mayor just said. Ditto. And, um, by way of example, all you have to do is look to the last four years. And you can understand difference between, say, all the people who function. Under the president, for instance, uh, a president that we had who could be wholly unqualified, and at the same time. He's the policymaker, is the popular choice and so on. And, but. The, the distinction of mayor, uh, the policy generator, policymaker. As opposed to essentially the policy implementers who are the, the department heads. And I think, and, and that's always been the conversation. The thrust of the conversation when we discussed this. Um, for the assessors position, the treasurer's position, now the clerk's position, this has happened over time. They used to all be elected and the reason they were elected was, it was to create, um. Uh, uh, to make it difficult for corrupt systems to set in place. At the time, um. Being a treasurer wasn't, didn't require the level of sophistication it does now. It's the same as true with the assessment, the same as with the, um. The city clerk. It, it was historically basically, you know, your small parochial community and dealing with things on a far more intimate level. And then. Now suddenly we, despite ourselves, we became a little more sophisticated and, and the world moved a little farther and faster. And requires actually someone with a skill set. Hopefully requires someone with a skill set. I mean, you know, it doesn't. Let's be honest, even an appointment can be terrible, uh, and, but that's on whomever becomes the executive, right? So, uh, and, and also the body, this body here in this case that approves that appointment. So. So, but those, those distinctions are worth making, and I, and I understand what you're, you're asking. I think it's a very good question. And you do see some communities that have, um, an appointed, uh, town manager. Uh, in which case those appointees have some flexibility that mayors don't have. That was part of the discussions about why for the four-year term. But now I'm starting to wander way off of, uh, of what we're talking about and I will shut up.
Whatever. Welcome.
Um, yes, hello. So actually from my, let me lower my hand. Um, so from my little hometown that I came from, actually, um, they just made the same decision by, in, in this case, I think it was a town manager. And so they opened it up so that there could be more qualified people coming from outside of the community. But I do have a question in terms of. Um, so in terms of like when this position becomes open or available, is this something that goes out into public notice in the region? And so then there would be a number of candidates that the mayor could pick from? Or is it just something that's kind of like? It becomes available, it sort of becomes known to the mayor, um, or? How, how would the availability of that position be publicized? To increase, um, you know, the possibility of the qualification of candidates?
Um. So in the, in the, in the current situation where we have had a, um, a now, uh. Twice elected city clerk, um, who also served as the assistant city clerk and previous to that served as the. Clerk to the council and so has, is a very experienced, um, city clerk and has run. Elections, including ones during COVID and, and, um, and, and tackled early voting and, um. I, my intention is to, um, appoint the, um. Incumbent who was running unopposed for reelection, um, in November, um, but hypothetically in the future, uh, when. The current city clerk retired or, or, uh, left and took another job, it would be treated like any other professional position and it would be put out. You know, it would be advertised, uh, like a professional position. So it would appear with all the other job listings and it would be open to applicants all over. The country, um, who wanted to apply, um, and then it would go through the, the normal appoint, uh, the normal sort of department head hiring process. Uh, but it's also then subject to confirmation by the city council. So there'd be that check, um, which the charter builds in for department heads. So that would be the process. But in the current case. Uh, the, my intention is to appoint the person that is the city clerk who's sort of being converted midterm to appointed.
Any other? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Those are made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, closed public hearing, discussion. Roll call please, Laura, on closing the hearing.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayori?
Oh, hold on, Counselor Mayori must have gotten booted out. There you go. Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed and we will take up that order later on in the agenda. Um, moving to updates from. The council president and committee chairs, I just wanted to note for the public that our second meeting in September is going to be actually on Wednesday. September twenty second, uh, which is unusual for us. We usually would meet on, as we know, first and third Thursday. Um, that Thursday, um, was gonna, was, had scheduling issues and there were going to be some counselors who would not be able to attend. So. We have moved it to Wednesday, the twenty second, same time, seven o'clock, but I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that change. Um, any other, Counselor Mayori?
Yeah, so the, uh, city council rules select committee will be, next meeting is Wednesday, September fifteenth at six P M. And as usual, the agenda will be posted, um, forty hours prior.
Great, thanks. Any other chairs and we can move into one minute announcements? Counselor Nash? You're muted.
Thank you, council president. So yeah, so where can somebody volunteer and get exercise, assist in traffic calming, assist overworked parents, and also work with happy kids?
I know.
That's the walking school bus. That's right, council president. And this year, the Bridge Street School Walking School Bus starts its fifth year of providing volunteer trips to school for kids coming down both Bridge Street and coming up William Street and Pomeroy Terrace. The, we're still looking for volunteers, and it's very easy to sign up. You go to the Bridge Street PTO homepage and look for the the tab for the walking school bus. Requirements to become a driver are simply to fill out a query. And once that's cleared, then you're, you you have a chance to head out with the bus and walk to school and and solve all of these vexing issues for our our school community. So and and I'll say, as somebody who's been with it from the beginning, it's, you know, it's a great way to start the day and feel like you're doing something really great. And then you stop at a place downtown and get a coffee, and then you walk home and you start with your workday. It's it's really a great experience. So anyway, so that's my first announcement. Could I do another one real quick? Yeah, it has to do with, you know, from ordinance review, Keith Benoit and councillor Thorpe and I are working on having, getting out information, information on housing security. And and we're working on drafting and ordinance to somehow codify having landlords provide information for tenants. But in the meantime, Keith Benoit has actually put all of much of this information up on the the city page under affordable and fair housing. So it's already there. We we are still working on the the manner in which we're going to drive people to that information. But just letting councillors know, or, you know, anybody who's listening know that if they have questions about resources around housing security, how to pay your rent, your, what kind of legal resources are out there, they're on the city webpage under affordable and fair housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councillor Mayori.
So in Leeds, this Saturday at 9:00 AM, at the Grove Avenue Bike Path entrance, we, there'll be a group of volunteers pulling spilt grass, led by Tom from the planning department. Spilt grass is an invasive grass that we're finding a lot, more and more each year in Leeds, and it really kind of kills a lot of diversity under it, the way it grows. So we need to get it before it seeds. And it's it's really easy to pull out, just bring some gloves. And it's actually, it's it's a kind of thing you can do and be social and 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 really help our our ecosystem here in Leeds. So at the beginning, it's September 4th, this Saturday, 9:00 AM, at the Grove Avenue Bike Path entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none. Mayor Narcoitz, you had communications for us, yes?
Yes, thank you, council president. I mainly wanted to update folks on the on the ongoing recruitment process for the Department of Community Care Implementation Director position. This is the kind of project manager position that would be tasked with helping to establish and implement and organize the the Department of Community Care that was recommended by the Northampton Policing Review Commission and funded in the FY 2022 budget. I did want to announce that we are extending the deadline for applications until September 24. That's basically three weeks from tomorrow. We felt that we wanted to have an opportunity to try to to try to cast a larger net and try to encourage more applicants. I think this, most of it happened over the summertime, and and we're now transitioning, you know, past Labor Day. So we wanted to allow just a little bit more time to see what what we got in terms of additional applications. So that that posting has been updated, and we'll be pushing it out on our social media. And it'll obviously, we're going to be continuing to push it out to as many groups and organizations that 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 we can, both in the United States and and in Canada, and and see if we can really draw a broad pool. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's already updated on the city website. And then my hope after that is to immediately have a have a screening committee, go through applications and identify the most qualified candidates and begin interviewing, hopefully to have have some recommendations for an appointment. I know a question came in today from Laura, which I figured I would just answer now, from councillor LeBarge, about the appointment process from there, and whether or not it would come to the city council or not come to the city council. Because this is sort of the project manager position and not the actual department head, and because part of the process that I laid out in my budget message, similar to the conversation we were having earlier about the about the charter change and needing to then update the administrative code to actually create the position as a department head that's appointed before the appointment would come forward. When the when the department is sort of fully formed, and that blueprint I referred to in my budget message was then available for the next mayor, then the next mayor, you know, two of their primary tasks would be to obviously submit the budget for FY 2023 for the department, as well as an administrative order, kind of formally creating the department and the mission, and the all of the other aspects of it that would be included in the formally in the administrative code. So my intent was not to treat this like a department head, as I think we had discussed earlier in this pro- process. And I do think time is important here. So so that's, I wanted to answer that question as well, that councillor LeBarge raised. So that wouldn't be coming to city services. We're also getting to a a point in the term where it's getting going to be more and more challenging as well with the council term ending. So my hope is to get that, have that listing close on the 24th, and then to quickly move forward with a with a review process and and an eventual appointment, so we can get that person on board.
Thank you.
Councillor Foster.
Mayor, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. A question that's that's come up in my mind is where I I think extending the deadline makes a lot of sense, and that we should get the broadest pool of applicants we can. One concern I have is, is if we're not bringing someone in to launch the department, potentially, we're looking at October, possibly even November, just thinking forward through the timeline. Some of the funding that's been allocated, can can that be carrying over into the next fiscal year? I don't know the status of the grants that are out there. Just trying to think through all the pathways that that can give this department the best sort of launch when when somebody's on board.
Yeah, so obviously, all departmental funds other than capital funds that are encumbered, those kind of, they don't, they don't roll over into the next fiscal year. They they they, you know, when the fiscal year ends, unexpended funds, you know, then move to free cash, and then, you know, come back to the city later in the fall. But obviously, the budget would, you know, the baseline budget would be there. The funding that we are getting from from the state, for example, the earmark, that obviously would not be tied to the city budget process. And I should also let you know that we've also applied for another state grant, a competitive state grant through the Department of Public Health. We submitted an application recently for $450,000 for this program, which is through an Alternatives to Policing grant through the Department of Public Health. I attended a kind of a bidders conference on it. We submitted a letter of intent, and we filed a full application. We don't have an indication of what the timeframe is. But this is a recognition by the state that there are many communities in Massachusetts, including, you know, right here in the valley, that are looking at these alternative approaches to public safety. And so this was a specific grant set up by the Department of Public Health specifically for that purpose. So we do have an application pending on that. So we, so that would also be another significant source of funding for some of the first time, one time kinds of startup costs for this type of department. So we don't know when we'll hear about that. But but we'll, we will be keeping an eye on it. So but those those kinds of things would remain. And then obviously, as certainly unspent monies could be reallocated within the fiscal year to other activities. But but at, once the fiscal year ends, operating funds do do not stay or carry over. They have to then be reappropriated in the next budget year.
Councillor Mayori.
I have two questions. The first is, are you saying, Mayor, that in the next, the next mayor with the administrative order, that will be the time that council gets to weigh in, weigh in on the department head? Would would the hiring process be formalized in a way that at that at that point, it would, it would, the candidate would come, or the temporary, the temporary person come to the council or city services? Or are you saying that we're, we're not going to get a chance in the process, a city council, to kind of vet this department head?
So what I'm saying is that the project manager is not the department head.
Okay.
And if you read the job posting, it makes it clear that the person could, is not disqualified from applying to be the eventual, but it's really somebody with a different, a little bit of a different skill set, maybe some of the same skills, but but basically, somebody who would, who can come in and sort of from scratch build this department and and, you know, create job descriptions and do all of the, you know, create, work with the mayor to create an advisory body that the NPRC recommended, and work with the other other depart, key departments like dispatch and the health department to, and then also doing the the stakeholder outreach and the outreach to all the folks, you know, who would be end users of this department, of those with, you know, lived experience and those who are facing substance use and and behavioral health crisis. So that all of that work would hopefully inform what the actual final structure of the department would look like, how many staff, how many, you know, how many FTEs, what the job titles would be, all of the things that would go into doing that, this project manager would be working on. And then, and then obviously, you'd be then recruiting somebody to be the department, to be the director of that department, which would be formalized in the administrative code, like all of our other departments. And so that would be the department head that would be, that would come forward to the councils for confirmation, like the city clerk and other department heads.
Okay, I see. So it cut the project manager, that's why it's been a temporary role, and it could, it could kind of morph. And in theory, that person could apply to be the director, or it could just kind of be a discrete position that ends when when the department is set up and and there's candidates for the department head, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. You know, interestingly, I'll just say, you know, I talked about a project manager or a project director, you know, in the budget message. And, you know, we did formalize the title to call it, you know, implementation director, and 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 it's graded and 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 all that. But I will tell you that, you know, one of the requirements of the state grant is that the city have a identified project manager for this project, and that we submit a resume for this project manager, that they are the designated person within the city who is the point person for establishing this, whatever this new service, you know, depending on what city and what they're attempting to do. And so it's sort of, interestingly, aligns with a state grant model. So.
So I guess it would be help, it would be helpful for these state grants to get that project manager there, correct? So that you can, it sounds like.
It would, yes, it would. You know, I would still, I would still, I would still say we're probably further along than a lot of other communities, because a major part of the, a major part of the grant was also, you know, community engagement. And, you know, so we're a lot farther along because we had the year long NPRC process, and we have, you know, a report. And there was, you know, 70 plus public meetings and hearings. And so I think we are, I think we're going to be able to demonstrate as opposed to someone else who just saw the listing and said, hey, let's do this. I think we're going to be in a much better, more competitive position. So yeah, it definitely is incumbent upon us to get that, that person in place. And and yeah, that they would be, they would be also, you know, the person reporting to the to the grant agency as well, and and making sure that we're filing reports with the grant agency. So that would also be part of this. Again, I'm, if we get the grant. But but yeah, that would be the role. So yeah, the department head would come later. And and again, doesn't mean that the person who applies couldn't apply to be the department head eventually. But it may in fact be a different person with a different set of skills in in terms of actual organizational management and setting something up and, you know, the personnel and budgetary factors versus someone who's an operational department director. So.
And if I may ask one other question, which was, I I've gotten questions myself about the screening committee, the makeup rubrics, and I don't know, I've talked a little bit with others about it. But if you have any framing around the screening committee, I assume you're going to compile it after, or or at the same time or after that, you know, you get the candidates' CVs in?
Yeah, I mean, I've already been putting together, forming a small screening committee, you know, which has been my longstanding practice whenever I've hired senior level staff. And I want to have a combination of key department heads. I want to have elected and sometimes appointed representation on the on that screening committee. And then I always try to have community members with some expertise as well. And so my current process I'm in right now is I'm putting together this screening committee. And I am intending to have, you know, two key department heads be part of it. The health director, Meredith O'Leary, as well as Kelly Schutze, who is the director of the Public Safety Communications Department or Dispatch. I think those were two of the key departments that were highlighted in the NPRC report as being really important to the success of this department. So those would be serving. I've asked the council president to serve and represent the council on this screening committee. Obviously, she was involved in the creation of the NPRC and and the appointment of the NPRC, and is your elected president. So I've asked her to serve. And and I've asked Booker Bush from the Human Rights Commission, and he was also a member, a former member of the NPRC, to serve. And he is willingly said he would do that. And then I'm in some conversations with three community members who have either a combination of professional experience, or or most importantly, a lived experience in with an emphasis on substance use and 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 mental health. And so, so I'm in some conversations around that, including having some good conversations with a representative of the Wildflower Alliance, who participated in the process heavily and was heavily cited in the report. And and a local outreach worker who does work in in recovery work and and. um, who does work in, in, um, recovery work and, and, um, house, um, houseless outreach as well, um, as well as, um, someone who works for, um, a, uh, a leading, uh, behavioral health agency, although not directly in North Hampton. Um, so, um, because I also want to have some objectivity and, and, um, I want to have some, some expert eyes, but, um, I frequently find it's helpful on these processes to have, uh, you know, if it's a department head, that's easy because, you know, you can get a department head from a different community to be part of the process, who can bring that expertise, um, to bear, um, without any of the baggage or biases of, of being in the community or working in the community. So, so that's my current, um, structure and, um, and, um, my hope is to, uh, that should be all in place. And, uh, once we have the close, there'll be, uh, um, they'll, they'll have, it'll be their process to, um, review resumes and develop questions and hold interviews and, um, and then recommend, uh, the, the highest, strongest candidates, uh, forward, um, to me for, for hopefully final, um, appointment of, of a, of a implementation director. So that's the process, um, that I've laid out and, um, and we'll see, again, we're hopeful that we'll, um, receive more applications over the next three weeks.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions about, uh, Counsel Foster?
More of a comment, Mayor, as you were talking, um, I just wanted to say how grateful I am to hear that people with lived experience will be a part of the, um, of the, um, screening committee. Um, so th- thank you for in, including that very important demographic.
You're welcome.
Okay. No other comments on this. We are going to move down to the consent agenda. I will read the consent agenda and ask for removals for discussion because there's no discussion on the consent agenda. We have the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and we have appointments to various committees. These all received a positive recommendation from city services at their July twenty-six meeting. So this is to the Council on Aging, Michael Ford, seven seven nine Bridge Road in North Hampton. The term is July twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-four. Uh, to the Historical Commission, Stephen Moga, uh, eighty-nine Marion Street. This is the Western Mass Chapter of the American Institute of Architects nominee. Um, the term is August twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-four. This is to fill a vacancy of that representative. Um, then to the Trust Fund Committee, Joseph Wilhelm III, fifty-four Prospect Street. Term August twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty-four to fill a vacancy. Urban Forestry Commission, Robert Postal, forty-four Washington Avenue. July twenty twenty-one, June twenty-four, the term reappointment to the Wedding Street Fund Committee, Mary John MJ Adams, sixteen Norwood Avenue in Florence. August twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty-four, this is to fill a vacancy. Um, appointments to the Wedding Street Fund Committee, these again have all received positive recommendations. Um, this is Michael Shaughnessy, five seventy-five Bridge Road. Uh, July twenty twenty, June twenty-four, re- uh, reappointment. Joseph Musterka, three twelve Chesterfield Road. July twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty-three, reappointment. And Andrea Murray, fifty-four Day Avenue, twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty-three, reappointment. Um, that is the consent agenda. I'm going to ask for the removal of MJ Adams. Any other removals?
Who approve with the exception of MJ Adams?
Thank you. Um, roll call please, Laura, on the consent agenda.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Move to approve MJ Adams.
Second.
This is made and seconded, uh, Mayor Narkowitz. Do you have a?
I can wait until after this, so.
Okay. Um, so I just need to disclose that MJ Adams has contributed to my campaign. That doesn't exclude me from voting on this appointment, but I need to disclose that information. Any other discussion on the appointment of MJ Adams to the Wedding Street Fund Committee? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that, that, uh, appointment's been approved. Now, Mayor Narkowitz, did you want to say something?
I, I, I just wanted to actually just thank the Committee on City Services, um, on behalf of, uh, uh, Treasurer Collector Bissell and Finance Director Nardi for holding an expedited meeting to take up those appointments. So, we really wanted to get the Wedding Street, uh, Trust Fund Committee, um, up, fully operational and everyone reappointed and, and, um, so that they, they're really wanting to, um, complete their work this fall and get a, get a round out of, um, of distribution. So, um, we, I appreciate you, um, expediting that so that we could get everybody reappointed and, and legal, as it were, um, to continue their work. So I just want to thank you. Thank you, Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you, Chief Mayor.
Okay, we are now going to recess for the finance committee. Laura, will you please take the role of finance?
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Okay, we only have two items on the agenda and that's the approval, or one item with two, two sections. Approval of minutes from previous meetings. This is minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and August nineteenth.
Vote to approve the minutes, June seventeenth, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Nash. I'm sorry, sorry. Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those have been approved and no other business, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe to adjourn. Roll call please, Laura, on your name.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And we are back in the full council and, uh, it makes sense that we have no financial orders on first reading since we had none in finance. So we're moving on to second reading, twenty-one point three zero six, in order to appropriate transportation infrastructure enhancement funds to hotel bridge improvements. The second reading.
Oh, uh, move, move to second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Is there any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Moving on to orders, twenty-one point three one zero, warrant for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, preliminary election on second reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Earn.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Mayori. Hmm, to maybe stepped away.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's acting up.
Apologies.
Okay. Um, that passes on second reading. We will have a preliminary election. We're on to twenty-one point three one zero, in order to submit a measure to the voters at the twenty twenty-one regular city. This is on second reading.
Move second reading, please.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Foster. Is there any discussion? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
To everybody.
Okay, great. Um, that passes on second reading and we're at twenty-one point three one seven. This is in order, an administrative order to amend the City of North Hampton Administrative Code. This was the order that we had the hearing on earlier, uh, just to remind people.
Move to approve, please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight. I'm not sure who the second was.
Yeah, three of them.
Oh, three of us.
Can we pick one, please?
Just pick anybody.
It's his birthday. He gets. Okay, um, so this is the administrative order, uh. Happy birthday. Um, this is to amend the administrative code. Again, this is about the city clerk, so we are, it reads established, there shall be an office city clerk under supervision of a city clerk. Um, it is striking elected by the voters of North Hampton, making this an appointed position. Discussion, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I just wanted to recognize that, um, you know, first of all, the work of the Charter Review Committee, they took this very seriously and, um, they, um, and I, and I, I think their recommendation, um, was, was the right one. I also want to recognize that this discussion's been going on for over a decade in my mind. That, um, I, I know that there were times where Counselor Dwight and I, uh, when I wasn't on council, we would discuss this very topic. And you, you can tell by his comments earlier tonight that he's, he's been a long part of this discussion that the city has been having around how to make this switch. And that, um, and I think it, it, it's very much the right thing to do. And I, I just want to do a, a shout out to both Clerk Mazza and Clerk Powers, uh, for, you know, as the, the two elected clerks that I worked with and, and thank them for their service. And now that we're moving on from that, that form of office, I, I just wanted to recognize that that change is happening and, um, it, 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 it was kind of a hometown North Hampton thing to have an electorate, uh, elected, uh, city clerk. We're going to move beyond that into a more, uh, uh, professional way of setting things up. But I, I just, I, I, I think that they both handled the office tremendously well. So, anyway, I'm going to be voting yes and want to thank everybody for all their hard work around this.
You're here. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first, single and only reading. Um, friends, that's it.
It's, I, I'm just going to point out that Laura's going to miss play twenty minutes on her prediction. Just, just, I don't want to rub it in, usually spot on, but I, I think, anyway, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion.
Five seconds.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by all, but Counselor Quinlan gets the credit. Um, roll call please, Laura, on adjourning.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Happy birthday.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's your birthday present for real.
Sure, this is the shortest meeting ever.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Weekend, everyone.
Happy birthdays.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.